City Council meeting to order, a special meeting. Will you please, no, we better do the Pledge of Allegiance first and then call the roll.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please call the roll.
Councilmember Falcone?
Here.
Francisco?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
House?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Williams?
Mayor Bloom? Here. Public comment, do we have any member of the --
No, we don't.
Okay. I love this, I always think about the dogs, remember when we were doing the dog park and there were 110 dog owners here for the dog park, but we have a huge budget and a huge budget problem and we don't have any members of the public, but you know what, I don't blame them actually, so that's okay. We will go directly to, go ahead and read it Brenda.
Recommended operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2009.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Jill Tara, Budget Manager, and I'd like to welcome you to the third public hearing and budget work session on the fiscal year 2009 recommended operating and capital budget. We're continuing the public hearing that was continued last time on May 7th, and today we'll be hearing presentations from Admin Services Department as well as the Airport and Waterfront Departments, from Finance, and a brief presentation on the non-departmental budget. We will continue the public hearing and wrap up the departmental presentations this coming Wednesday on May 14th at 6:00 PM, where we will hear the final departmental presentations from public, I'm sorry, from Police and Fire Departments. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Marcelo Lopez for the Administrative Services Budget.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I'm Marcelo Lopez, I'm the Director of Administrative Services. Today I'm joined by Cindy Rodriguez, who is our City Clerk's Services Manager, Tom Doolittle, who's in charge of Information Systems, Barbara Barker, in charge of Human Resources, and then we have Rob Badger, who's one of the supervisors in Information Systems, and Perry Blacken, who's also one of the supervisors in Information Systems. This is a team that represents today Administrative Services, and let me start with the presentation right away. I promised Jill that since I was the first one coming up, that I would not take all of the time, so I am going to go swiftly through my presentation, but I will give you sufficient time for questions if you have any questions.
Thank you.
But our goal is to move rather quickly with this presentation. Our presentation is pretty similar to the other departments, you'll have a department summary, and then by fund you'll receive an appropriations overview, you'll get an overview of some of our key projects and initiatives, some of the changes in programs, which we don't have very many, contingency adjustments for our entire operation, and some highlights of the P3s for fiscal year 2009. Let me start with the department summary. If you look at the Administrative Services Department, we have a budget of approximately $4.7 million. Our department total FDEs, full-time equivalents, is 31 and 1/2 staff. We are a service department, consequently you would expect that the bulk of our expenses would be for salaries and benefits. We provide services throughout the entire organization as well as externally. Moving on to the area of budget appropriations by divisions, we have three divisions, Human Resources, the City Clerk's Operation, and Information Systems. Information Systems is an internal services fund, and that represents approximately 50% of our budget, about $2.5 million. The remaining amount, 46%, is for Human Resources and the City Clerk's Office. Both of those operations are general fund departments, general fund operations rather, divisions, so you can see we have a combination of fully funded general fund as well as the internal services fund. Again, our budget for Administrative Services is about $4.7 million. Let me move right on to the general fund summary, and the general fund has 16, we fund 16 positions with the general fund, and that again is the operations of the City Clerk's Office and Human Resources. Again, services, therefore you would anticipate that the bulk of our expenditures would be in the salaries and benefits categories. We have, you can see the distribution, supplies and services 12%, and you can see the remaining distribution by allocated costs, special projects, and equipment. If you look at the Administrative Services operation for the general fund, you can see that the bottom line reflects a 13% reduction. At first glance, you know, you look at it and you say, well, 13%, what's going on here? And you really would have to move on directly to the special projects category. And here's a situation that you will see in our budget from year to year. Every other year when we run an election, you will now see that number, you'll see that variance. So for that reason, you can see an 80% reduction in funds, well, we don't have an election in '09, that is fiscal year '09. We have an election in '09, but it's really budgeted in the fiscal '10, so that's why you see these variances in the numbers. But the bottom line, you take that away and then the numbers are closer, and not as much as the 13%. Again, you will see the salaries and benefits, there has been an increase from fiscal year '08, from 1.5 to approximately 1.6, a 6.6% increase. Moving on to the next area, Administrative Services revenues, the overhead allocation credit for our department is 4.5, it reflects a 4.5 increase from fiscal year '08 when compared to fiscal year '09. Really quickly giving you an overview of some of the things that we do by division. The City Clerk's Office is responsible for a variety of things, many important things. One, and more recently is the 2009 election, the standalone election, we'll be responsible for that. As you know, we conducted the last election, for, last city council election was conducted by the city and not by the county, and this was the first time in many, many years, we anticipate conducting the 2009 election as well. The City Clerk's Office is responsible for maintaining the official city record, all of the agendas, the minutes, the ordinances and resolutions, they're managed by the City Clerk's Office, even though the City Attorney's Office is responsible for preparing the ordinances and the resolutions, we are responsible for maintaining that record, so it's a very, very important function. Another responsibility in the Clerk's Office is to comply with the Fair Political Practices Commission regulations. This not only entails the paperwork, but you know, developing the systems and procedures to make sure that that information which is required to be collected is collected, retained, and managed according to the law. We have a large number of advisory groups, and Cindy, I think we have more advisory groups than the cities of --
Los Angeles.
Los Angeles, San Francisco, so you know, we, we're way up there, and if you compare us to a city our size, comparison to those other cities, you know, it takes half a lot of work. It's the recruitment, is the guidelines, is the notices, is appearing before the city council, making presentations to you, and then you going through the selection process itself, us tracking that entire system, it's a, it's a pretty elaborate process, and that's handled by the City Clerk's Office. And an additional responsibility is that of public records requests. As a public agency, we find ourselves with a lot of requests from the public on particular information. While many of these are handled by departments directly, we are responsible for managing that process to make sure that all those requests are handled pursuant to the law and are responded to according to the required guidelines. Moving on to the Human Resources Division, here's the, the department that's responsible for recruitment, selection, and retention of all city employees. It's a, it's a very demanding task, you know, we handle our own employee benefits program, we also work in managing the classification and compensation program, all those are part and parcel of the full-service Human Resources Division. We also provide staff, staffing and support to the Civil Service Commission. One of the things that we are very, very proud of is the Employee Development Program that we have established with the city. You've heard of the LEAP program, which stands for Learning for Excellence and Achievement Program. This was a program that got started in the City Administrator's Office, and then it got transferred and is today managed by the Human Resources Division. We have over 280 courses that we conduct per year, and you look at approximately 20 students per class, 20, 25, a fair number to say, you know, about an average class size of about 20 students times 280 courses per year, so that's, that's quite an undertaking. And anything that you can think of that would help increase the abilities and skills of employees, so it's an excellent program, and we're very pleased with that particular activity. We also have the Succession Program. If you recall, last year we reported that there had been a management retreat, and we came back with a strategy to put together a succession program, again, in recognition of the fact that a number of employees will be leaving city service within the next five and 10 years, and now those numbers really begin to shrink because we're really talking of three to the next eight years, because when we first started talking, it was a five to 10-year period, so closer and closer we're seeing that people are going to be leaving city service in key management positions, so we came up with a succession program. It consists of six pieces. One is the City Leadership Academy, where we are providing a two-year program for 25 employees who have an interest in becoming managers in the near future and moving into department head positions or upper management positions. So this program is going quite well, it's a two-year program, and what we have done is, we have partnered with the ICMA, that's the International City County Managers Association, and we looked at all the competencies that they have identified to certify municipal managers, so we've taken basically those concepts and turned them into classes that we now teach as part of our program. So that program is going well, we expect the first year to conclude in June, and we're planning to start the program again next year in September. We also have the interdepartment team projects, and you've heard, heard about those in the presentation with the City Administrator's Office, but that's when we have the city departments working together, representatives from city departments working on specific topics of interest. The Employee Performance Evaluation was one, the 980 Work With was another. Staff assessment, a personal, we've developed a tool to assess ourselves in terms of our strengths and weaknesses, and then find that gap with the hope that some of these courses that we are teaching will help you fill those gaps, so we're, we're very excited about that program also. We have a talent exchange program that involves moving one individual from one department to another department, again, with the goal of gaining experience in a different department, but at the same time bringing in a different perspective from another department, something that, you know, it's like the best of two worlds, you, you get from the department in terms of learning something new, and you give to the department in terms of bringing in a fresh and different perspective. We also have a coaching program, and the coaching program is designed to a team, upper-level managers with individuals below that level, so that there can be some form of a partnership, talking about the self-assessment, talking about career development, talking about what it's like to be a manager in a given area. I've chosen to really spend more time with this particular piece because I think it is a very important part of really preparing for the future, and the succession program and the LEAP program are both strategies that are designed to get us there. We are looking at the Administrative Services, and I'm going to look at a couple of budget highlights. One is the Complaint Campaign Disclosure Program software. We are proposing to establish this program for this coming year, and this was something that was discussed at the, at a subcommittee level, it was brought back to the city council, and what was holding it back last time was that the agency that we were contracting with was not available to provide the service during the last election. They'll be ready this year, so we made provisions for that. And then for next fiscal year, to continue the second year of the City Leadership Academy, we have funded $36,140, which is what we anticipate needing for the next academy. In the general fund, there are no program changes, no staff changes, no fee changes, and no capital projects changes. Moving into the area of contingency adjustments, like every department, we had to deal with contingency adjustments for the general fund, and ours total for Human Resources and the City Clerk's Operation, I'll be dealing with Information Systems separately, our general fund adjustments total 63,189. And the next slide shows you what we propose to implement as contingency adjustments, and you see the list, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but it's a reduction in advertising, do some memberships, outside duplicating, hourly salaries, training, meeting, and travel expenses, equipment rental, supplies and expenses, and the elimination of microfilming of minutes, ordinance, and resolutions. While we see these, these changes, I think we can do our share to help relieve the burden on the general fund, and we can absorb this cost according to the schedule that we have listed up here.
Okay, Mr. Schneider has a quick question.
Just a quick question on the elimination of microfilming, is that because you're now able to do that electronically and you don't need to, or is there going to be some backup of ordinances and minutes and so forth?
We do have backups of ordinance and minutes, and we do have electronic records that we're trying to maintain. Ideally, if we have the funding, it's a good thing to have in the event that there is a major catastrophe in the city and then you begin to lose your records, so having them on microfilm would be a very good thing to do, but we are relying on some of the electronic formats to maintain those records.
So it's just as long as we have a secure backup system because we would hate to lose a gap of city work, because you never know when you need them back again. Okay, thank you.
Okay. In terms of key performance objectives for P3s, for the general fund departments, divisions rather, is to implement the electronic campaign filing system, as we indicated that we would proceed with this year. We are planning to return back, to return to the city council to present you with options on the general municipal election, and the key issue here is, are we looking at a traditional poll election, or are we looking at a vote-by-mail program election? And there are, you know, pros and cons to both, council had that discussion last year when we talked about the election, but there are some economies to be derived by doing a vote-by-mail election, and we'll come back to the council, it's a policy decision for you to make, and we'll present you with the options and the cost differentials for both. And then third key performance objective that we're highlighting is the coordination of the Phase 3 of the Work Stream Module for the Agenda Management System for tracking council agenda reports. You see now that as you go online, you're able to get all of the information of the council agendas. The Granica system works quite well for you, it also works very well for the public. Well, internally, we're doing the same thing with departments, so this is that portion of the program that deals, working directly with departments, to implement the system through the entire citywide operation, internally as well as externally, so that's one of the things that we're doing for this coming year. In terms of LEAP classes that we want to highlight, one is doing a LEAP class on the city's recruitment process. To us, one of the principal functions of the Human Resources Division is the attraction, attraction and retention of really high caliber people. So what we're looking at is providing more training in this area, not only for the staff of the Human Resources Department, but for the entire operation, the more we can leverage from each other in the recruitment and selection process, the better it will be for the entire organization. Ethics, very important part of functioning in an organization like ours, we have high ethics standards, and there are legal requirements for council members to take ethics training every two years, and we feel that it is also very important to have it at the staff level, so we're providing ethics training. And lastly, another very important piece is writing effective performance evaluations. That is a tool that is very important, it's important to provide information to the employee that's been evaluated, but it's also a very important planning document to really lay out the expectations upfront as to what we need to do to evaluate employees, so we're proposing to do this training to improve evaluations of staff. Moving quickly to Information Systems, let me talk about the information, the fund summary for this particular fund. The Information System Division has a budget of approximately $2.5 million, has a staff of 15 and 1/2 employees, again, an operation that is responsible for providing services, consequently you would see that salaries and benefits would constitute the highest category of expenditures, but in this case you see that it's lower than the general fund divisions, and that is because we provide other supplies and services which are larger categories, and we also have equipment that we purchase. So our budget for the Administrative Services Information Systems Division is $2.5 million. Looking at the overall operation appropriations compared 2008 to 2009, the bottom line is that an appropriation reduction of approximately $52,000, a reduction of approximately 2%. And if you look at the percentages again, you see that with the salaries and benefits being the largest category for us, the remaining areas where we have 76% reduction and a 25% reduction, you know, sort of balance out because the numbers are so much larger at the salaries and benefits category. There is one item that is not included in the budget presented to the city council and presented back in April, and that is the upgrade to the computer room, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, power distribution, and a fire suppression system. These are three very important items that need to be budgeted, and we have to have a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system that, that keeps the temperature in the computer room right around 75 degrees. Currently, and it has been for the past long period of time, much too long, we've been in the 80 degrees, 83 degrees, 84 degrees, and the more equipment we acquire and the more we go into automation, the more heat that is going to be generated by the equipment, therefore the system that we have no longer satisfies those needs. We also have power distribution, the UPS, I thought it was UPS, something that was delivered, but it's the, actually the uninterrupted power supply, so that's the UPS, and that's a system that's designed to maintain power to all the equipment that we have in our computer room for a certain period of time in the, in the event of loss of power. Well, we are coming up with different pieces, different programs, a new GIS system, a new FMS system, so the new technology requires new type of equipment, so we need to take care of that, and we're making provisions for this in this request. And lastly, there's a fire suppression system, there is no fire suppression system in the computer room. So all bundle, this whole system, total cost is estimated at $85,000, and we propose to fund it from, out of two areas. One is a Microsoft settlement. I won't give you all the details because I don't remember all of the details, but as a result of a settlement with Microsoft, we were able to receive $50,000, and Tom, you might help me a little bit with that, as to what that was all about.
Mr. Doolittle?
Thank you. The state of California litigated with Microsoft on behalf of themselves as well as all cities and counties, and our proportion of sales to Microsoft resulted in about a $50,000 settlement returned to us.
What do you know?
So that worked to our favor, and particularly in this particular situation, and we're proposing to use those $50,000 to offset some of the costs, and then taking $35,000 from the Information Systems reserves to cover the entire project, again, estimated at $85,000. This again is not an item that was included in the proposed budget. If we look at the major projects and initiatives for Information Systems, you've heard about three of these. One is the Utility Billing Replacement System, we've been working with that, we're in the second year of that, correct Tom?
The utility billing was a one-year project, started a little over one year ago.
And then we have the centralized GIS implementation and the financial systems replacement selection. Those are very important projects for us. You'll hear more about the utility billing replacement and the financial systems replacement as part of the Finance Department presentation at the end of the day. And lastly, under major projects and initiatives, we have new servers and storage technology that we're working for. If you look at the Administrative Services, our significant change was a rate reduction of 3% to all departments. This was to help meet with the budget reduction. Other than that, there are no program changes, no staff changes, and no capital changes being requested as far as the budget. Plan capital, if you look at the Financial Management System Replacement, $850,000, this is the second year of a four-year project. At this point, it will involve the product selection, hardware and software acquisition, the implementation of the charts of accounts. And then we move on to the central GIS, centralized GIS, and the council will recall that we have shifted from a department-driven GIS program to a centralized GIS program, where we now are able to operate more as a, as a unit rather than individual pieces, yet we, we still maintain the individual needs of every department. We're in the second year of a three-year project, and this, we have budgeted $200,000. We are developing the interfaces to the Cartograph, Tidemark, and creating the web user interfaces. In terms of the rate reduction, total Information Systems adjustments to the tune is almost $70,000, and the general fund reduction, one time, it's $19,100, ongoing is $50,850, which again totals $69,950. Here's, here are the areas where we've made the adjustments and we are recommending the adjustments, reducing the cost of internet connection, not only did we reduce the cost in this area, but we also increased bandwidth, and I'd like Tom to talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Through some negotiations with our internet service provider, we were able to get a higher bandwidth, bandwidth speed at less cost, and we are planning that, testing that, and expect to have that implemented within the next several weeks. We have it up in testing right now, and we're just getting ready to put it into final production.
That's great.
We're looking at terminating some software maintenance expenses, reducing professional services and maintenance contracts, delaying some software purchases or upgrades, this would be an example of the one-time adjustments. We are reducing travel expenses, and we are delaying the equipment purchases or replacements in certain areas, again, that would be another example of a one-time adjustment. Key performance objectives, among the list of many, we've selected these. One is to select the FMS replacement product and implementation of the Phase 1. We're installing new energy-saving servers, storage technology, because a lot of equipment has now reached the end of life. We are implementing procedures to automatically power off our equipment, this helps us with our green initiatives as well, and we're implementing Phase 1 of copier, printer analysis and recommendation projects to try to reduce the number of printers, to try to be more cost-effective, more cost-efficient, and more, and more energy-sustainable with what we do. That is a summary of our presentation, and I and staff will be very glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Mr. Horton?
Marcelo, thank you, good presentation, two questions. I'll ask them both, and then you can just go ahead. I noticed in the recommendation for implementation sheet that you're reducing training, and the material in the booklet seems to suggest that we need at least as much training if not more, so I didn't quite understand the juxtaposition of those two items, I would be interested in knowing how that works. And then secondly, last year we had a series of public meetings on campaign reform, and a number of suggestions came out regarding election reform, and one of them was exactly what you've been talking about today, which was the reporting of campaign contributions. And what I'm interested in knowing, there was a system used by the city of Los Angeles that they apparently have found to be very effective on that, and I wanted to -- I'm wondering if you're talking about using that system here or some other system that we haven't talked about.
Let me start by answering the latter question. No, we're not looking at using the LA system. A number of reasons for that, and one of them was cost. Two is the requirements for maintenance, and it really wasn't suitable for us. And if I'm not mistaken, Cindy, I think it's no longer available, or there are a couple of other complications that we experienced.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, actually, they did give us an approximate amount of about $30,000. They did recently sell the system to, I believe, the city of Long Beach. I'm not sure if that's the correct city. However, they did, when we recently called them, maybe about two weeks ago, and they informed us that they would have to reevaluate that cost. When we did speak to representatives from the city of Long Beach, they did purchase it. They did have some issues with it that was requiring their staff to try to get up to speed on learning the system because they did not create the system, so there are some issues there. But it is still available for purchase.
So do you have another option if you don't use that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, we are currently looking at the NetFile system. That is a system that's being used by many cities, city of Berkeley, some of the larger cities, San Francisco. And that is a data entry system. It's $10,000 a year, $2,500 a quarter. It provides many services, both to the public, which is, I know, is key and was key to the committee at the time. It allows, once the campaign disclosure is submitted, it's immediately available on the internet, and also provides each of the candidates to go and input their data, and it retains the information so it can be used at any time.
Could you send out a website to us on that so we can check it out ourselves? Because I do get questions all the time about campaign reform. Thanks.
And then on the second part of your question, Councilmember Horton, and that's on employee training for administrative services. This is the, some of the employee training to reduce outside training for HR staff by approximately half. That's one area where we think we can absorb that reduction and still receive some training. Ideally, if there were more monies, and more training is always good. But given the circumstances right now, that's an example of where we have chosen to, well, why don't we reduce the cost in those areas? It has less impact than if we have reductions in other areas.
Any others? Oh, Mr. House.
Just a couple of things here, Marcelo. On the elections, since we're doing these on every other year basis, I noticed that this year you're not including that at all. It's like a zero. But wouldn't it be prudent for us to be spreading that across, so we know we're going to have to run an election next year, that we would accommodate, we'd plan for that this year, include that in our budget as a portion of what we're going to need for next year, and be ready instead of having a big expense every other year? Or is it, maybe it's not that consequential?
Councilmember House, it is a consequential expense, obviously, but it's one of those that we're funding in 2010, as opposed to because there would be no expenditures incurred in 2009. So that recent, I believe that's why traditionally has been funded that way unless there's a different perspective that the city administrator might have.
Yeah, that's the basic reason, is we find it's just easier to budget if the year is going to be incurred. We know it's going to happen every other year. The other thing I do want to mention is this budget does not include any funds for either an initiative that may qualify for the ballot, or if we put the utility users' tax election on, because this would be consolidated with the general election, you know, the cost will not be anything near what our typical election is. But what I would expect is we'll come back to you if the council chooses to put either of those items on, and we'll have to have a supplemental appropriation.
Okay. Well, I guess then, when we look at the 10 budget, then we'll be looking at a two-year cycle, and we'll be looking, I guess maybe at the front end of a two-year cycle, we'll be able to look forward and see that we're going to need to accommodate that second year for the election. What's the funding for the Phase Two and possibly Phase Three of the GIS when that comes around? Where's that coming from?
Councilmember House, the total amount for the financial system is about $2.4 million. Year one was $150,000, which is current year FY08. Year two is $850,000. Year three is $850,000, and the final year is about $600,000, and we'll clean the project up at that time.
And that's just, that's general fund?
No, that is capital. That's established and approved capital funding.
Okay. I didn't catch that from there, so it's a capital program?
I'm sorry. I thought you said financial. Did you say geographic, GIS?
Well, no, there's two, aren't there? So let's hear both.
Correct.
That's great. I realize now we've got the layup.
My own segue here.
Yeah.
The GIS program is also capital-funded. It's a total of $600,000 over three years. First year was $300,000, that's FY08, which we're in, and we are on budget and on schedule on that. Next year will be $200,000, and FY10 would be $100,000, which would be complete project cleanup for that as well.
Is there outside funding available that comes in for that, or is that all internal? Is that from the city itself, or are there grants that we're able to achieve for that kind of work?
This is all internal funding, and some of that is assessed against the enterprise funds, and some of it is against the general fund. We are investigating grants and have not found any that we could qualify for, nor have we applied for any at this time, but our eyes are always open in that area.
Very good. Well, and then I'll ask you this question, too. The upgrade to the computer room is not in this budget. What are your ideas for how we're going to accomplish that?
The upgrade was not in the recommended FY09 budget, but we're recommending it as a staff adjustment to the FY09, and proposing to fund it with the Microsoft settlement and the use of.
Okay. Oh, I understand. I understand. So the original recommended budget for the first cycle, okay, got it. And then who's our service provider for our internet connection?
It's a local company known as Impulse or Netlogics.
Okay. Well, we need to thank them.
Yes, they're a very reliable company as well.
Right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no more questions, that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you go to airport next, is that what we're doing? Okay. I figured it out. We're going alphabetically. Administrative services, now airport. Good.
As the airport staff is coming up, and we haven't issued anything public yet, but last week, we received an award from the FAA as the Airport of the Year in the southwest United States.
Oh, that's wonderful. What's that based on? Being just nice people?
The main reason was the airfield safety project.
Oh, yeah. No, working hard. I know that, too. Yeah, that's wonderful. They don't stop me, though, with my big scissors. I can't figure that out. I have these big scissors. I go right through TSA. Oh, well. It's true. I don't know. Yeah, there's something.
Why do you need to take your big scissors to other towns and do ribbon cutting?
Oh, no, no, no. I just got ribbons on airplanes. That's my newest thing.
You mean the really big scissors?
The really big.
The ones that are like three and a half feet long? Okay. I got it.
Good afternoon. Hazel Johnson, Director. Thank you, Jim. Sorry. Karen Ramsdale is out ill today. So Tracy and I, with assistance from Jeff McKee, will present the department's budget and hopefully answer your questions. We, too, will go over the budget in some detail. It's $12.4 million. We have a few key projects and initiatives. We do have changes in staff. At this time, we do not have a fee change. We do have a change in capital, and then we wanted to highlight some of the P3s. The budget overview for the department will include our expenditures, revenues, and then our reserves. As I said earlier, it's $12.493,508 is the total department budget. This does include the debt service portion for the Tea Hanger project that we recently completed. The number of employees in the department remains the same at 54 full-time employees. And unlike other service departments, the airport's very capital-intensive. So you'll notice that supplies and services equal, and in some cases exceed, once you add capital, our personnel cost. This chart breaks it out by program, and maintenance, operations, security make up 62% of the budget, or about $7.7 million. Under the administration division, I wanted to point out that that does include the airport's overhead allocation, insurance costs, and appropriated reserve, which is close to $1 million, We, too, have reduced our budget. Supplies and services in particular. We had overestimated some costs for environmental mitigation. We have contracts now, and so we have the actual budget numbers. Parking will also be reduced once we go to the pay-on-foot equipment approach. And I think that's all for that. Under equipment, the reduction, we had purchased some security cameras and also the noise monitoring system that we got started. Those have been purchased, so this year, equipment is also down. So we have a total reduction of 6.1% in our budget. On the revenue side, the airline industry, as you know, continues to be in flux, and with high fuel prices, they continue to reduce capacity. And so that means that some flights will be taken away, some added. So I'm anticipating that we'll have a touch of a reduction under the airline, commercial aviation of 6%. Interest income is down. That's based on the finance department's recommendation to the airport. Other revenue is up. That includes the airport's TSA reimbursement, Transportation Security Administration's reimbursement to the airport for airport patrol responding to the checkpoints. So overall, I'm anticipating 1.8% reduction in total revenues. At the end of the year, the airport's reserves are always balanced, and this slide is from last June, 32,007, but you'll notice that all policy-required reserves were fully funded, and then we had almost $3 million left over. The reserves above policy are used for capital programs.
Yeah, Mr. House has a question.
Could you go back one, a slide before that one? I just wanted to ask a quick question on the income. Small thing, maybe, but on the non-commercial aviation leases, you're showing it going down. It seems like of all the kinds of things we do at the airport, that's one that we would have the most control over. Why do we see that going down?
Two reasons primarily. One, recall that the US Forest Service relocated to Santa Maria, and one of the buildings that they occupied has now transferred over to commercial industrial. It's fully leased, but it's no longer counted as non-commercial. And the second reason, when the airline terminal expands to the south, the new building will take a portion of the Mercury ramp, and so that reduction is also reflected in this proposed budget.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Whoops, I'll go backwards. Reserves. I did highlights. I could hit a number. Major projects and initiatives, we really focus next year on three major things. And of course, the most important is the airline terminal improvement project, getting that under construction. But coupled with that is the solar power project for the terminal, which would be in the long-term lot. We're looking to install photovoltaics so that we can generate energy for the terminal. And additionally, we really want to focus on the city sustainability program and incorporating that in a variety of ways at the airport. At this time, we're not recommending a fee increase for parking. We need to complete the alternative transportation plan, which is in its final stage of review. We want to relocate the short-term lot to the long-term lot when we get under construction with the terminal. And then the lot number two that's over off of Hollister will be operational full-time. And at that point, when those changes are made, at that point, we'll come to council with an adjustment to the fee schedule. Proposed staff changes, we do have three. Two in the maintenance program. We've had for a number of years two maintenance coordinator positions, one of which has been vacant for a while. But based on the increased computer program, computer work order system, administrative RFPs that go out of maintenance and bid processes, we feel that administrative assistant would be a better suit for that, so we've asked that we delete the maintenance coordinator and add the admin assistant. Similarly, the senior custodian has been working during schedules and purchasing, and we feel that that position, because of the additional duties, should be elevated at some point. So HR agreed with us, so it'll go from a senior custodian to a custodial crew leader. Under security, similar airport operations assistant. We needed an extra little level of supervision and coordination, so we've used one of those and had it reclassed to a senior operations assistant. Moving on to our capital program. First, we take care of our major assets of the airport. We also have two projects that have been underway for a couple of years in infrastructure, and then, of course, we want to implement the balance of the aviation facility plan, which is the terminal. Routine ordinary maintenance for building roofs, painting doorways, street resurfacing, hazardous materials, infrastructure repair, manholes, waterline sewer, and then, of course, pavement on the airfield that's not covered by FAA grants, we've allocated $750,000 for those projects. The two infrastructure projects, the airport water system, should, it has been designed, it'll go out for construction this summer. The airport sewer system, we're working with the Gliva Sanitary District on this project to put in a new lift station and a gravity flow line, and that is being designed at this point. Key performance objectives. Administration is really focusing on sustainability. Karen would like to develop a policy for the airport overall. And as I mentioned, we will go out with RFPs for the solar power proposal for the parking lot in the long-term lot at the airline terminal, and hopefully negotiate an agreement with that next year. Karen has also proposed that all airport staff go to one type of sustainability training, either a seminar or workshop.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Corning.
At that time, when you're proposing to bring the fees back for adjustment possibly in the parking lot, in that it will be a brand-new parking lot, it'll be reconfigured very differently, it will have other facilities in it such as the solar panels and so forth, are you planning on bringing us an analysis of whether or not it's best to continue with the contract out of that particular lot, or would it be more cost-effective to bring that lot? That's one of two lots in the city structure with regard to parking that we don't manage ourselves. The other one is the Paseo Nuevo lot underneath the Paseo Nuevo. And so I'm wondering whether or not at that time, or at some time between now and then, you're planning on doing an analysis of that, in that we've got a whole new kettle of fish going on out there. So if you could speak to that just for a moment?
Mayor Bluman and Councilmember Falcon, we have extended the parking contract with ActCo until 2011, I believe, when all the changes are done. When they were selected, we did do an RFP, and we included the city's parking program as part of that. We will certainly do the same next time at the end of this contract, just to see what the system is and what the costs are. And Coe charges us about $39,000 a year as their professional fee for managing the parking lots. The balance of the costs are direct costs for salaries, and they do pay living wage to their employees, and that includes the parking shuttle program that runs 24/7.
Okay, great. I can understand leaving things status quo, especially if they came in as the good bid this particular time. But next time, given that it is going to be a whole, very new sort of complex in its entirety, I think we'd like to do a little deeper analysis there.
Certainly. Business and properties. A major project for us this next year will be the completion of the concession program at the terminal. We'll have an ability to expand services for food and beverage, as well as gift shop and other specialty shops at the terminal. Those will all be, primarily, they'll be behind the security checkpoint, so there should be some real opportunities for increased revenue. We also We also are looking to reduce the carbon emissions and personnel costs in the parking program with the automated pay-on-foot equipment that we'll be installing. And we also have a goal to coordinate with the rental car companies to work with them to establish a goal for hybrid vehicles used in Santa Barbara. That might, it's going to be a little tough just because of the way they purchase their, their vehicles, but we really, they're interested and are more than happy to work with us on that. Marketing and communications, our website, fliesba.com, is going to be upgraded during this next year. And then they will also take the lead, marketing will take the lead in all of the public information and outreach regarding the status of the airline terminal when we have changes in, under, while we're under construction. Facility maintenance, once again, sustainability, replacing roofs with reflective material to reduce the heat island effect. And in those buildings that do have heating and ventilation systems, getting those upgraded to a more efficient unit. Air operations area, FAA has agreed that LED lights can be used on taxiways. The cost of those kind of exceeds what we can do in one felt swoop. So we are going to do a phased program to install LED lights on the taxiways. Security, we want to revise the patrol procedures manual to make it consistent with PD, and then also formalize our training program for all employees. Facilities planning, they have two major construction projects this year, airline terminal project, the rental car QTA facility is another one. Both of those are supposed to, are targeted to be lead silver. And then initiate an update to the airport master plan. By finishing the terminal, we've completed that plan, and it's time for a new one. We took our operating budget to Airport Commission in April, and they recommend that council approve that. And I have two more, four more slides for the two other funds, the FAA and PFC grants. This is where the changes, you know, Congress has not extended or reauthorized many programs, and certainly not the FAA program. So we're working on a continuing resolution. And when we filed the budget, they were, FAA was not in a position to issue any grants. Since budget was filed, they can do that. So we did amend the budget to show our entitlement amount of about $3 million.
But they want us to triple our personnel, is that correct?
In R, yes, ma'am. All of the funds in the entitlement funds, FAA Airport Improvement Program grant funds and PFCs will be used for the airline terminal improvement project. The other fund is the customer facility charge. This began in January 2006, and we collect $10 per rental car contract. And those funds are estimated to be $625,000 this year, $36,000 in interest. We will also spend that money on the rental car quick turnaround facility, which should be under construction in July. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Hazel, I was looking at page H19 in the large book, and I was looking at the projection, this is a P3, on land leased in square feet, which stays the same for the period. And I, I thought that we were still in negotiation on leasing a fairly large block of space out there. So would that not show up on this, or?
Sorry, I brought the short book, not the big book. Land leased in square feet.
It shows 3,083,7407 for the, well, it does change a little bit, but not much.
I'm thinking part of that is the Forest Service ramp where they left, and now it's possible that we can release that area. So we put it back in.
Okay. What about the Saris Regis?
I think we, we still show that as land available.
So that, that's included in here?
I believe so.
That's just, that's what confused me a little bit.
It is still included as leasable land, yes.
Okay, anybody else? No? Thank you very much. Thanks, Hazel.
Thank you.
We're letting you off easy. Or you did a good job, either one. Good job, thanks. Yeah. That's right. That's right. No news, good news, that's good. Thank you. So I guess Finance Department is next, is that right? I'm going alphabetically, you know.
I think we have the Waterfront Department next.
We're going to skip over to the end of the alphabet. Waterfront, good. That's fine. Okay, turning our books here. There you go, Mr. Bradley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is John Brightley. I'm the Waterfront Director. And with me today are the three managers, Scott Redman, Carl Triberg, and Mick Cronman. If you have any questions, they'll address those related to their respective divisions. Scott's going to make the presentation as the business manager, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Redman.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Scott Redman, Waterfront Business Manager. And of course, we'll be going over the Waterfront Department's proposed fiscal year 2009 budget this afternoon. Just in terms of an outline, I'm going to start out with what our budget status is right now, three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year 2008. Then we'll look at 2009 expenditures, revenues, and then some budget highlights, including key projects and initiatives, fee changes to the fee resolution, significant capital program issues we have to discuss today. And then we'll do our, our cash flow model and finish up with some P3 highlights, performance measurement highlights. In terms of where we are today, or well, as of March 31st, 75 percent of the way through fiscal year 2008. The good news is that we've either expended or encumbered 67 percent of our operating budget. If you remove the encumbrances, we've actually spent 63 percent of our budget. So in terms of expenditures, we are running under budget. And in terms of revenue, we're right on track. 75 percent of the way through the year. Our leases have realized 76 percent of the budgeted income. Financial management, which is essentially the interest on our reserves, is a little ahead of schedule at 83 percent. And then parking services and marina management are right, right in there as well, at 73 and 75 percent respectively. So that's, that's good news for our current budget. In terms of our appropriations and expenditures for fiscal year 2009, the administration and community relations program is expected to go up by 2.7 percent. That's about $96,000, and that mostly consists of some copier leases, increase in overhead allocation, and salaries and benefits increases. The property management program, at least expense-wise, is a, is a fairly small program. That 33 percent reduction in expense is a little bit misleading. There's a large encumbrance that was carried over from fiscal year 2007 to the tune of about $100,000. And that was for our CPA firm that does our lease audits. So it's, it's not a drastic reduction. It's simply a, a function of the encumbrance carrying over from the prior fiscal year. Financial management is expected to go up 7 percent. Again, that's our very smallest expense program, and that's due to bank, increases in bank charges. Parking services is going down 4.2 percent, and that is because some equipment that we purchased in fiscal year 2008 to install our honor fee parking system in the Palm Park lot was a one-time expenditure, so we won't be having that in FY09. The harbor patrol program is expected to go up five and a half percent, and that's strictly due to salaries and benefits increases. And marina management's going up by about $15,000 or 5 percent. We're anticipating replacing our marina management software, which is essentially our, our point-of-sale system at the harbor patrol counter where people come in and buy parking permits or pay their slip fees. It's our, it's our point-of-sale system. We're going to need to upgrade that.
Okay, Mr. Williams has a question.
Scott, I, I'm unfamiliar about this, but one thing I thought that probably is not reflected on it, but I wanted to give you and the council a heads up, is something that Carl and I had to talk about on, on Friday at the last meeting of Beacon. We're expecting Joint Powers Agency dues to go up by $5,000. And we've been kind of expecting this for a while because they haven't gone up in many years. But is that reflected in this, or is that somewhere else, or?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, the Beacon dues that we pay currently comes out of the administration and, and community relations budget. And I believe we pay $10,000 or so a year for the, for those dues. However, the increase amount that you speak of, we didn't see coming as yet, so that's not reflected.
It's not official as of yet, but I think we should probably at least look at it in the mix of, of things. It would be, because it would be passed at the next Beacon meeting, which would be after we finish the budget, it might be good to do it in advance as opposed to afterwards. And I wanted to give you a heads up and make sure that, that the council is also aware.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I, on the, on the $3.6 million program for administration, I think we'll be able to suck up the $5,000 or so.
Good point.
But thank you. Thank you for the heads up. Just to wrap up the appropriations and expenditures part, facilities maintenance is our, is obviously where we spend most of our money maintaining the harbor, and this encompasses the harbor and Sterns Wharf maintenance. Expected to spend 3.7 million in fiscal year '09, and you'll note that that's just a 1.1 percent increase. So that's holding the line pretty well on our biggest program. And then finally, facilities, design and capital, that's another small expenditure program, and that's mostly salaries to oversee some of our, some of these capital improvement projects. So for total expenditures for the fiscal year 2009, we're looking at $11,94,000, which is a 1 percent increase over fiscal year 2008. And I, and I would like to point out, especially if you're looking at page B3 of your budget document, this is strictly the operating fund. So this does not reflect the $3,363,000 capital program. We'll cover that separately when we, when we get to the capital projects. This is strictly the operating fund, which is $11,000, $11 million. This is just a graphic of, of our expenses. Just to put in perspective, salary and benefits is about 50 percent of the Waterfront Department budget at $5.5 million. Supplies and services is about $2 million or 19 percent. Our allocated costs and ICS charges, and this includes our park's maintenance fee, is about $1.5, $1.6 million in fiscal year 2009, or about 14 percent. And our debt service is $1.7 million. That actually appropriated reserves, $150,000 of appropriated reserves snuck in there too. So that's debt service and appropriated reserves. And then the other expenditures, we have some small miscellaneous expenditures of 2 percent. And that's equipment, computer hardware and software, and the Sterns Wharf Electric Shuttle Project is what that miscellaneous category is. So again, the, the proposed expenditures for '09 is $11,94,000. Moving on to revenues, we're looking at about a 2 percent increase in the parking program, 1.3 percent in the marina management program. Leases were budgeting for a 2.1 percent increase. The Finance Department had us revise our interest revenue projections down a bit, so dropping down about 5 percent. And then miscellaneous revenue is relatively stable. So our proposed revenue for fiscal year 2009 is $11,528,000. And again, I'd like to point out, this is, might be a little different depending on what page you're looking in, in your budget document, because your budget document reflects a $14 million revenue. And that's because there's a $2.5 million loan from the State Department of Boating and Waterways that's rolled into that revenue figure. This is, again, this is our operating budget, and we will talk about the $2.5 million loan from the Department of Boating and Waterways as part of the capital budget. So we separated that out of this. So hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. House has a question about that.
Question, question on the, on the parking part there. Do we have an arrangement with, what is our arrangement with City College there for the lots that are city lots? Are there, do we collect anything for that, or what's, what's the agreement?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, the Leadbetter, what we call the Leadbetter in the Harbor West lots, and then those are essentially waterfront lots, and the lots across the street, which we call the LaPlaya East and West lots, which are the City College lots essentially, those four lots are managed under a joint powers agreement between Old Spanish Days, the city, and City College. And it goes back to 1962. It's been amended numerous times, but basically, we get the ability to use the LaPlaya lots after June 15th, between June 15th and September 1st of each year. So for instance, if we have overflow parking in the launch ramp on a really busy day, if there are any special events going on, we get to utilize those lots, and we'll set up someone to charge and make a little bit of revenue, not much. The flip side of it is that City College gets to use for their faculty, students, and staff, they get to use our Leadbetter and Harbor West lots during the school year from September 1st, or a little, a couple days before September 1st technically, to June 15th. And for that, they pay us $1,500 a semester. So that's, you know, dating back to a very old agreement.
Okay, very good. So real revenue neutral, it's a cooperative kind of synergy thing, working together with them. Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. Jim mentions a good point, that they have been purchasing $20,000 a year or so in parking, in our waterfront parking permits.
Oh, interesting. And then about maintenance of those, is that a, are the expenses shared as well, or is it all on us to, to keep those parking lots up and resurface them and that kind of thing?
Yes, we, we handle the LaPlaya, I'm, excuse me, the Leadbetter and the Harbor West lots, we slurry seal them on about a five-year cycle. And that's our responsibility to maintain those. City College, it's their responsibility to maintain the LaPlayas. And in that old 1962 agreement, they're supposed to maintain them at the level and quality that we maintain ours, which has been a subject of debate from time to time.
I see. Wondered about that. Okay, well, thank you very much. It helps me understand.
Nicely put.
Okay, just to put a, a little graphic up here for where our revenue comes from, obviously, our marina management program is the, is the big revenue source at $5 million, or 43 percent of our revenue and of our budget. And that encompasses slip fees, but also other things such as visitor slip fees, slip transfer fees, live aboard fees, wharfage and dockage charges, and, and a variety of marina-related fees. Our lease management or property management program comes in second at $4.1 million, or 36 percent of our budget. And that, of course, is for all of our leases in the harbor commercial area as well as the wharf. Parking services comes in third at 1.8, almost $1.9 million, or 16 percent of the budget. And then we have interest on our reserves. We generate about $200,000 or $300,000 a year on interest. And then we have miscellaneous revenue, which is a whole host of, of smaller fees, lease assignment fees, copying fees, reimbursement for damage to city property and so forth. So again, our fiscal year 2009 proposed revenue is $11,528,000. And that, again, is not counting the $2.5 million proposed loan from Department of Boating and Waterways. In terms of key projects and initiatives coming up for the next fiscal year, of course, we'll be continuing with the Sustainable Santa Barbara program. We recently installed as, as part, in keeping with that program, some solar thermal units on the Marina One restroom. And we'll be doing a second one installation in fiscal year '09, which we'll talk about in a moment. And also Carl Triberg sits on the city's green team, so we'll be continuing with those efforts as well. The Clean Marina program is managed by Mick, and that is an ongoing program as well. We recently completed a dive, dive project in Marina Two, pulled about two tons of stuff off the bottom of the harbor floor there. And this is an ongoing project that we do in collaboration with various agencies. Something that is not a waterfront project that I'm sure you'll be hearing lots about is the West Beach pedestrian improvements. That's actually brought to us by the redevelopment ag- That's actually brought to us by the redevelopment agency, funded by the redevelopment agency, and we're more or less the beneficiary or the client on this project. And of course, our harbor businesses are very excited about that. We'll be carrying along with our Undaria invasive kelp management program. Again, we've been collaborating with other agencies, putting divers in the water and attempting to remove this kelp from the harbor, or at least manage it as best we can. And then finally, the big ticket item that we're going to be hearing a lot this year and in upcoming years is the Marina One reconstruction and the Marina One construction financing, which is proposed to be from the Department of Boating and Waterways in a loan. We like to bring to you some grant opportunities. Again, we have an ongoing grant program with the Department of Boating and Waterways for abandoned watercraft abatement. When people abandon their vessels, we get reimbursement for crunching them up and taking them away. A new project this year, a new grant, is the Used Oil Block Grant from the State Integrated Waste Management Board. As you may or may not know, we have three used oil recycling stations at the harbor, and we also distribute oil absorbent pads at the Harbor Patrol Office, and we take, once they do their thing and soak up the oil, we take them back and get those recycled as well. So this $23,000 for fiscal year '09 will be used to manage those projects. Waterfront Department program and staff changes, we have 46 full-time equivalents, 46 full-time employees. This one's pretty easy, we have no new positions or reclassifications proposed for fiscal year 2009. It will be strictly status quo. And again, salaries and benefits is 50% of the waterfront department operating budget. Proposed fee changes, we intend to implement the honor fee collection system in the Palm Park Lot. We discussed this last year. We expect this to be implemented by September. A new fee increase that's been proposed is increasing our public room, public meeting room fees from $10 an hour, $30 a day maximum, to $25 an hour, $100 a day maximum for commercial, private, and non-ocean-related users. We looked around and we found that we're the cheapest game in town, the Veterans Building is more expensive than waterfront and all the parks facilities are, too, so we wanted to raise that up just a bit to bring it up to market. Also approved last year by the council was a 2% slip fee increase for fiscal year '09 that will take place on July 1st, as well as a $25 per foot slip transfer fee increase, which will also take place on July 1st on all slip length categories except for 20-foot Moving on to the capital improvement program, we recently completed the Marina Four-B End Ty project, reconfiguring that lease area to accommodate three larger vessels. As I mentioned, we completed the Marina One East restroom solar thermal project. In progress, we have our staff in-house redecking the wood deck structure in Marina Two. And of course, the upcoming big project is the Marina One replacement project, which is basically the first three phases are what we're designing right now. The first phase consists of landside, utility upgrades, replacement of the gangway and the main walkway. That would be the first phase, and phases two through three are the finger dock replacements of N, O, and P fingers working east to west in Marina One. Here's a photograph of the Marina Four-B project. We basically drove 16 piles, and we're now able to accommodate three vessels of up to 90 feet. The western vessel there on the left is the Channel Islands National Marine Sanctuary Research Vessel Shearwater, so they now have a permanent home in the harbor. The middle vessel is the Philippa, it's a private yacht that we identified through a request for proposals process, and the easternmost vessel is the whale-watching vessel Speed Twin. So we now can accommodate three larger boats where we could previously only accommodate one. Minor capital improvement project was the Marina One East restroom solar project. We had a contractor come in and install those just in the last couple of weeks, and again, we'll be doing the west restroom in FY '09. And here's staff working on the redecking of the Marina Two. Terms of our entire capital improvement program for FY '09, we'll be continuing with our annual Marina maintenance repair, Sterns Wharf annual repair. We have a contingency for seawall sidewalk repairs. We often find sinkholes and need to replace sidewalk sections by section. The big one is the Marina One walkway replacement. We're looking at the first phase, costing about $2,500,000. The parking lot maintenance program is just our ongoing cyclical slurry sealing and restriping of the lots. We're looking at replacing the roof at 125 Harbor Way on the Marine Center building, and replacing piles, stringers, and deck boards on the Navy Pier or City Pier, as it's also known. And we've identified $10,000, we've earmarked $10,000 for engineering and design to stabilize and upgrade the Harbor Patrol Accommodation Dock. We're visiting voters, visiting boaters come in and check in with Harbor Patrol. So that's our capital improvement plan, it's $3,363,000, as I mentioned, for the entire program. However, we're planning on getting a $2.5 million loan from the state, so the actual expenditure from the waterfront department will be $863,000. So there's where that 2.5 million comes in. A little bit more on that 2.5 million. We submitted an application for $6 million to the Department of Boating and Waterways on March 2007, in advance of their April deadline. The application was for $6 million for the first three phases of replacing Marina One. $2.5 million, as I mentioned, was earmarked for Phase One, which is the gangway, head walk, and utilities replacement. It's the most complex part of this project. Carl and I went to Sacramento a couple weeks ago on April 25th, and the first installment of the loan that was approved was for $720,000 for fiscal year 2009. Came up a little short of $2.5 million. At this point, that is not enough money to bid the project out or start. So we're looking at a number of alternatives, one being delay the project until fiscal year 2010. Department of Boating and Waterways is just out of money for fiscal year '09. Another option we're looking at is breaking Phase One into two parts and doing the shoreside utilities first, and then hopefully this time next year, we get another bite at the apple and get the rest of the money from Department of Boating and Waterways. We're also looking into a variety of alternative financing, including the California Infrastructure Bank and the Maritime Infrastructure Bank. We're looking at other ways of trying to keep this project on track because of the favorable bidding climate right now. When we're presenting you with our budget, we always like to present a six-year cash flow model, projecting six years out into the future. For the purpose of this six-year model, we're assuming a 2% revenue growth in property management and parking, a 2% slip fee increase every year, $25 per foot slip transfer fee increase each year, except for the smaller slips, and an hourly parking fee increase from $1.50 to $2 per hour in 2010.
Question?
Mr. Horton.
Scott, are you tying your parking to the downtown parking at all?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, we're not tying it directly, no, but we're keeping an eye on what they're doing. We could push that forward or back depending on when they increase their rates next.
I just think there ought to be dialogue, at least, between you. It's going to seem a little disjointed if there isn't.
Thanks, duly noted. In terms of our, in terms of our revenue, we expect, well, our FY '07 actual revenue was $11,200,000. We're expecting that to increase by about 12% over the next six years to $12,600,000. Our expenses, we're expecting to increase by about 14% over the next six years, from $10 million, $10.6 million to $12.1 million, which would give us a net operating gain at the end of each year ranging from $600,000 to $370,000. In terms of reserves, the policy reserves or the operating reserves we're required to maintain are simply 25% of our operating budget less debt service. So the top line is just a function of our budget, 25% of the budget is maintained in policy reserves. The next line is our Harbor Preservation Fund, which is our reserve for capital. We're required to keep that between $2 million and $5 million. I'll draw your attention to the final year 2013 of this cash flow model. Again, it's not a budget, but just a forecasting model. And we do dip below that $2 million mandate in fiscal year 2013. So we'll have to pay careful attention to this in the fall as we go into our capital improvement plan, as we go into our next capital improvement plan, and of course, next year, next winter, as we go into our next two-year budget cycle. Finally, the performance measurement program. We'll just highlight a couple of the new measurements that we've been tracking. In terms of financial management, we will be reducing office paper use by distributing monthly AE and E reports and weekly budget progress reports electronically. In property management, we will be tracking the number of tenant contacts regarding sustainability issues. An example of this was last summer, we went on a campaign with our restaurants to eliminate styrofoam takeout containers in all of the waterfront restaurants on the pier and in the harbor, and we were successful with that. In our Harbor Patrol program, looking to enhance public relations and outreach by conducting a minimum of 45 class tours in fiscal year '09. Another Harbor Patrol tracking measure is tracking enforcement contacts, foot patrols, and marine mammal rescues, and also supporting the Clean Marina program by conducting the annual operation clean sweep that we just mentioned. In the facilities division, we're looking at reducing energy use by converting 600 lineal feet of holiday lighting to LED lighting, also installing 16 dual-flush valves in restrooms throughout the waterfront, installing 200 feet of recycled plastic bull rails and wheel stops on Sterns Wharf each year, and maintaining 60% of our facility's staff on flex work And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Mr. House? Then Ms. Schneider.
It seems like we did all right last year with the weather and the heavy surf that we had for that short period of time, didn't do serious damage, but what's our contingency for that? Is that all reserves? Is that where we go for that? And is that the reason we're keeping those reserves, or is there another source of support if we need to rebuild part of the wharf or breakwater or something?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we do have, that's what the Harbor Preservation Fund is for. We also have an extensive insurance policy from our Risk Management Department that covers earthquake. It also covers coastal flooding, wave events, wave wash events like this. I believe the deductible's a half a million dollars, so it would have to be some pretty serious damage. But those are the two main things that we would go to, our reserves and our insurance. We did go to appropriated reserves, we did ask to use some appropriated reserves recently after that February storm incident knocked a few piles loose under the wharf, also scraped off the plumbing for Moby Dick Restaurant, and knocked out a good chunk of handrail along the breakwater there.
So there was, I didn't catch as much of that, that's amazing. And then what about the other side of that same equation? We've had those fires over the years, and we've got the fire suppression system in place and all that kind of stuff. Does that require upgrading or maintenance that's not in this particular budget, is there any? Or is it just part of the normal, everyday running the business, keeping it in shape?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, the existing deluge system just requires routine inspections, repair, and maintenance, part of our operating costs, and I'd like to note that Southern California Edison just installed a new remote control interrupter whereby they can shut off the power remotely to Sterns Wharf, which is a great improvement for safety with respect to potential future fires, so hopefully there'll be none.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Schneider. The Harbor Commission's looked at this, and they're all, have they voted this through to us, or has this gone to the Harbor Commission, the budget?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Schneider, this, what you've seen today has not gone to the Harbor Commission specifically. It went to them as part of the two-year budgets.
Two-year plan a year ago.
Correct.
Yes, since there's no major changes.
Right, and we do go to them with a mid-cycle review and so forth to make sure that, and a year-end review as well, to make sure that our revenues and expenses are tracking.
Okay, thank you. And then on the waterways, $2.5 million, that's now $720,000. Is there a time limit of when we need to spend that money? Because if we're going to delay the project, are we then in trouble of actually getting the $720,000? And related question is, can we get that $720,000 in our account, or, you know, now, even if we're delaying the project by a year? How is that going to work?
Councilmember Schneider, that's a good question. What we've come up against has been an interesting learning process, working with the State Department of Boating and Waterways, to say the least. There are a number of harbors ahead of us in the queue, so to speak, that have applied for and been approved to receive significant money. Dana Point comes to mind. In December, they were allocated $15 million. On April 25th, they got another $9 million. They're nowhere near close to starting their project, so.
And they already allocated that fund, so they have those funds available to them now, but they just haven't started?
Correct. So, yeah, you could hang on to that money, you sort of glom onto it, you can hang on to it for a while before you spend it, certainly. We don't run the risk of losing it by not using it immediately.
And then where are we? We haven't gone to bid yet, or have, no, or have we?
No, we're at 90% completion, completed plans and engineering drawings, so we're very close to going to bid. We would expect to go to bid in August or September, July.
In July, that's assuming we could start this in fiscal year '09, but if we delay it a year, that might change the whole bidding process, I would imagine, too. So that issue is, you're figuring out your options now, and that would come back to us in July, I guess, when you get finished with the plans, or?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Schneider, we're looking at a number of contingencies relative to that. I'd like to clarify one question, which I think you asked. The $720 doesn't come to you, you have to expend it first. They don't send you the money and then you get to use it. If you spend it, you can get a draw and take the money. It would have been the same if we got the $6 million. We wouldn't have gotten the $6 million all at once, we would have got it as we expended for the various phases of the project. What it does do is it doesn't allow us to bid the project. If we don't have $2.5 million, we can't bid it. So $720 was nice, thank you very much, and maybe that'll be added to some other source of funding that we might find.
Well, then how secure is the $720 if it's on a reimbursement rate, and let's say we base this, and then we delay the project a year, are we still guaranteed at least that $720?
Yeah, from our experiences, people hold on to money for years that they're not going to spend necessarily right of way, so we wouldn't lose it in any way. In fact, we're hoping that it'll be added to it for some reason. DBA is our only source of funding as a new budget year comes forward from the state, although we're not optimistic about that. But keep in mind, this is Gastac money that comes from boaters, so there should be a source of funds that supposedly stays there, not goes to other uses at the state.
Yeah, right.
But that's another discussion. So I've had discussions with Bob Pearson and with Jim about the possibility of looking to do our own financing, certificates of participation possibly that could be issued for, say, the $6 million, and we will be exploring that along with the ones that Scott mentioned, and be back in front of you hopefully by the time we need to bid the project. We'd like to stay on course for this year because we think the bidding climate is to our advantage. We are ready to go, we do have the permits, we do have the plans, so we're going to continue to work towards that. But again, without the money, we may not be in a position to implement. We may then break the project apart and do the landside improvements this year and wait and do the dock work next year. So we'll give you more in the near future.
Great, well, good luck.
Okay, any other question for the waterfront department? I see, oh, Ms. Falcone?
Well, just to build on that a little bit, I guess what I heard you say was that there is another opportunity to possibly get some more money in the next cycle of funding, of grant funding, so that we could add to the $700,000 an additional, and then possibly in a third year, an additional, and get enough money built up. Is that a possibility, or are we foreclosed? Is, is that a possibility, or are we foreclosed from bidding in subsequent years? And how do we befriend Dana Point's legislators?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Falcone, I'm fairly confident none of those other harbors are going to give up their money. We've had some of those discussions with some of the directors, and they're telling us about how there might be other sources, some, some other place.
I'd like to know how their legislators procured that money in the first place.
That's more of a political question, when I probably am not in a good position to answer.
Can we add to it over another couple of years? And I don't want to delay the dock work that many years for obvious reasons, but if we can't, if we can't bid it for insufficient funds, or even if we do, do certificates of participation, get to the place where we can bid it, the $2 million, can we still go back to?
The answer's yes. Yes, we can. And we've had that discussion, that we're thankful for the 720, they like the project. When you have more money, we want more money, because, as you know, this is only the first three phases of about an eight-phase project, if I remember right. And so.
So we may need to close a little gap, and then we can keep going back to them, and hopefully they will be a little more available with the funds for this project.
Right. And in fact, they have closed applications. They're not going to take any more applications because, number one, they don't have a lot of money to loan, it's not a grant. It, it says that the doors kind of close, we've got enough demand with existing in-queue harbors that are already there.
But our whole project is in there?
Yes, that, we were one of the last applications approved.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm just trying to see this part, that's it.
That's location. Another day.
Okay. Mr. Samario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Samario, Assistant Finance Director, and will be presenting the Finance Department's budget for fiscal year '09. We have a number of slides, and I'll be including within our presentation the Environmental Services Division. As you know, it's not part of finance, at least for, on a temporary basis. And then this will be followed by a presentation of the non-departmental, departmental budget for next year.
Okay.
It's a similar outline, we've seen it before. We'll do a budget overview, and this is by fund, so we'll be starting with the general fund, but the budget overview, some budget highlights, looking at the general fund contingency adjustments for the Finance Department, and then closing with P3 highlights. And I wanted to start first, actually, with looking at an organizational chart. We actually have about seven different operational areas. There's administration with Bob Squared above. Budget management is headed by Jill Tara. Jill's General Services, Bill Hornung. Treasury, that position is vacant, that was previously filled by Cindy Odell. Our Environmental Services Division, now part of finance, the Environmental Services Manager position is vacant, we just had that recently approved. Rudy Livingston heads up the Accounting Division, and then Risk Management headed by Brad Landreth. You can see at the top right, we actually have 18 programs in our department, three funds that we span, and almost 51 full-time equivalent positions. And what's interesting is that we are the largest administrative department, and when you include Environmental Services, we are actually the third-largest department in the city.
Madam Mayor, I have a question on that, actually. Can I just?
Ms. Falcone.
On that point, exactly. How long do you envision the Environmental Services as being part of the Finance Department? I mean, there were some very clear reasons why that ended up the way it did currently, but what's in the Environmental Services Department is truly a function of Public Works. So at some point, I would assume that will transfer out and go back to Public Works, especially since now we have a new Public Works Director who'll be coming on, and hopefully will be filling that vacant position in Environmental Services Manager. So this is not a, a permanent condition, is it, Mr. Samario?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, we will be making recommendations to the council before, as we put together the fiscal year 2010, '11, two-year financial plan. To be honest, selfishly speaking, I would love for it to stay in finance, but I think other factors have to come into play. But I don't want to presume an outcome yet. I think it conceivably end up in finance, but it probably makes more sense in Public Works, but we're not, we're not there yet.
But we'll be having that discussion in the next budget cycle.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
How can you be, are you the third-largest general fund department? Because Parks and Rec, Public Works, Police, Fire?
I know it's odd, but think about solid waste that we all, all the monies we pay to the haulers, that's about $18 million. We have Risk Management at $7.2 million.
I know, but I'm looking at positions by department. Are you just talking general fund, or are you also including?
Nope, citywide. Citywide, we're about $29-plus million in total.
So you are bigger than Parks, which is at 21.
How can you be bigger than Public Works, Parks and Rec, Police, and Fire?
Yeah, we're not talking positions now, we're talking about the dollar budget in terms of.
The budget?
The budget. The positions, we are fourth, number one, administration.
Got it, okay.
Operation. But just looking at the dollars, it's really unusual to, I just did the math, and it was interesting. So looking at the general fund only, within the general fund, we have 35.77 full-time equivalents. Our total budget in the general fund is about $5.1 million. You've seen this in other general fund departments, salary and benefits makes up the lion's share of the budgets. For us, it's 69%. We also have allocated costs at 13%, supplies and services at 10%, special projects and then other, which is really less than 1%. Looking at it by division, within the general fund, there are four divisions, administration, treasury, accounting, and general services, and they're pretty well divided evenly. The largest is accounting, at 31%. Looking at it in terms of detailed appropriations by major object, this shows FY '08 amended budget compared to the proposed budget for next year, and the increased percentage increase or decrease. You can see that in total, the budget will be growing just 1.3% or just, just under $69,000. You can see that the biggest decline is in supplies and services, and that's where we, where most of our contingency adjustments have been, have been made. So we'll be talking about more of those in just a few minutes. Looking at our revenues, you can see that we have, next year, proposed about $3.9 million in revenues in the general, for our department, which means that about 76% of our operating budget is actually funded from revenues, and only 24% from, from taxes, if you will. Our, our largest revenue, of course, is the overhead that we charge to special and enterprise funds at almost $3.1 million. That's going up from the old '08 amended by 4.5%. That's just salary and benefit costs going up. Utility billing, admin fee, those are the, that's the 5% that, that we receive from both haulers, if, in, for services we provide for billing of our trash, the trash bill, it's incorporated and consolidated into our water and wastewater bill, but for those services, we get about $859,000. So in terms of proposed program and staff changes, nothing going on that's new or interesting, no structural program, programmatic changes, no staffing changes, and no changes to our capital projects. Some capital projects that we are working on, and you've heard at least about one of these, the first is the utility billing system implementation, we're right in the throes of that right now, that system we, we paid $450,000 for. We are scheduled to go live on August 1st of this year, and subsequent to that, we will be implementing an online payment portion of that, so customers can go online and review their account, their details, and do some history inquiry, as well as pay their, their payment online with a credit card. We're also working on a financial management system replacement, that's a, it's a $2.5 million project, citywide. We are currently in phase one, which is a needs assessment, we have a consultant we're working with, we're almost done with that. Next year, we'll have probably the first couple of modules to be implemented, probably close to $850,000 next year. Just to note that 50% of this project will be funded from the general fund, and the other half from the enterprise funds and special, special funds. So our contingency adjustments, you can see that we had no adjustments to our revenues, all of our adjustments are coming from expenditure reductions, a total of $152,000, of which 137, almost 138,000 is ongoing, and the balance is one time. Looking at the details of that, the first one is, against my will or desires, we decided that it would be appropriate to charge some of my time to the, to the solid waste fund. I think this is really appropriate, actually. I spend well over 50% of my time in, in the solid waste operations, so we, we thought it'd be appropriate to, at least for next year, allocate 37.5% of my time to the, to that fund, which would reduce the general fund's cost by $75,108. We've also, are proposing to reduce how much we are paying our, to MBIA for sales tax audits. They do work on a contingency fee basis, and over the last few years, we've noticed that our payments have gone down. So this is really just aligning our budget to what we're actually spending. We're also proposing to reduce what we pay MBIA for utility users' tax audits. They are on a fixed fee basis, it's about $40,000 per year, and does include a provision or a portion for Mr. Don Maynard, who has helped us develop a model ordinance for UUT. So we're looking at reducing that by about a quarter, since it'll be later in the year, which we might look to cut that back, so it's $10,000. That'll be one that if we, if things turn around in terms of revenues, we want to restore that, because there is some value to that, having our utility users' tax payments audited each year. We're also looking to reduce funding for the cost allocation plan and fee study we do every two years. We believe that by just narrowing the scope a little bit, to not do a full fee study for all fee citywide, but just those departments that are truly critical, like community development, we could save $10,000. We also have, had a recent retirement, and we have therefore have a vacant position in utility billing that we're looking to reclassify to a lower position, which would save us almost $15,000. And then lastly, is just to reduce various supplies and services by $17,500.
Mr. Horton, please.
Bob, just looking at the reductions there, I always thought that the audit resulted in, in gains, and you, you wouldn't want to reduce it, because we, we realized benefit by doing the audit. So by doing less audit, don't we get less gain?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horton, are you referring to the utility users' tax audits, or?
Well, sales tax audit fees and UUT both.
We'll start with the sales tax audit. Again, it's an, we're not looking to reduce the service, we're actually just looking to reduce how much we've been having to pay over the last few years. We budgeted, we had budgeted about $50,000, but our payments, which are just contingency based, so whenever they find something, we pay them a quarter of that for, for, I think, eight quarters. But those payments have gone down, so it is possible that they could come up with a big find, if you will, and we'd have to pay them, but fortunately, it would come with additional revenues as well. But, so this is just aligning the, what we're paying for those fees to what, to align our budget to the fees we're paying. On the UUT side, yeah, there's, there's a value to that service, they just recently found something with Cottage Hospital, so this, we're not really, not really happy about having to reduce this, but given that we're having to make cuts, this is one of those things we had to do. Again, as I indicated, if we, things get better next year, better than we thought, we would look to, probably look to restore this, these services, so that not to eliminate them.
Okay, thank you.
Some key performance objectives. The first in the general fund, of course, is to provide support to the Infrastructure Financing Task Force and the system making recommendations to council by December 31st of this calendar year. That's really Bob Pearson and Jill Tara, who are staffing that from the Finance Department. As always, we look to process and our payroll accurately and timely. We do bi-weekly payroll, so our goal is 99.9%. I'm not sure why we didn't say 100%, but it's pretty close. And then the next is to rebid 100% of our blanket purchase orders every, over $50,000. And this has to do with, we, every, at the beginning of each year, we issue blanket purchase orders, and they are different and unique in that they are intended to cover a whole year's worth of services or purchases of goods or services. For example, if when the cater treatment plan wanted to purchase $100,000 worth of chemical supplies, we would issue them a blanket purchase order, and presumably we would bid that, that contract, so that whenever they buy purchases throughout the year for a smaller amount or smaller increments, they don't have to issue a requisition and do all the paperwork. So it saves time, and oftentimes, we can actually get better discounts because we're doing volume purchases. So our goal is to make sure that any of these blankets that are over $50,000 are bid each year. To the extent they're not, it would amaze us that any time there's an individual purchase for more than $2,500 or $25,000, then we have to go through all the paperwork of bids, and whether informal or formal bids. So this is just an efficiency measure for us. We want to make sure we can bid as many of these as possible. And then, of course, we, one of our goals is to maintain 100% accuracy rate for our water meter readings. These are, you can see have a green bullet, because these are green objectives. The first is to ensure that all of our Finance Department events are zero waste, and we've been successful with those. We also want to increase the number of employees opting out of the printed pay advices they received to 2, 500 employees. Currently, we have 300 employees that are doing that. Just to kind of give you some context, there are about 1,600 paychecks that go out every two weeks, that includes permanent, part-time employees as well as hourly employees. There are about 11 or 1,200 who are on direct deposit of those 1,600, and of those, about 300 who are, who have opted out of getting a printed or hard copy of their pay advice. And we'd like to increase, increase that to 500 by the end of next year. And the next is to modify, really, the next two are related. One is modifying the purchasing code and then developing a policy with respect to green purchases. We, we have a little bit of a challenge now, because our code requires that we bid, we award the contractor the bid to the lowest bidder. So we're driven, driven by costs, whereas there are things that we're going to want to look for from a vendor that are really related to environmental performance, we want to be able to consider those in the selection of a vendor, where there may not be the lowest bidder, but because of environmental performance or considerations, that we can select them. So we were looking to, we're in the process of working with the green team to come up with some language for our purchasing code, and also for, for a purchasing policy to accomplish those goals.
Ms. Falcone? Quickly on that, the, I have a city attorney in here. The, the law requires us as government agencies to take the lowest bidder, but it also allows us to institute, I don't know if the word reasonable comes in, but some sort of, within legal parameters, preferences. Is that what you're talking about? In other words, we can give a preference to a local vendor, we can give a preference to, or, or can we? I mean, what exactly are the parameters here? And are we going to be able to have much actual say with regard to, you know, the company can be as green as green can be, but how restricted are we in that? I don't want to long ask.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, our, our purchasing activities are guided by our purchasing code, that's our local law, and that local law provides that we have to go with, with regards to ordinary goods and services, excluding professional services, we have to go with the lowest bidder. If it's under $2,500, we don't have to, but anything over $2,500, essentially, we have to bid it at some level and go with, go with the lowest bid. What we're trying to do is to modify our purchasing code, as well as develop some policy, policy statements and guidelines, so that we can go with somebody other than the lowest bidder. And we would be legally entitled to do that if our code was adjusted accordingly, so that we can look for environmental factors, if you will, so we don't have to go with the low. We can consider other, whether the manufacturing process, the packaging, things of that nature that allow us to select, other than the lowest bidder. I don't know if that helps.
Well, I assume that that will go to ordinance committee, and then they'll get the restrictions that apply from the state codes and the various other entities that we don't have control over. Thank you.
So we're moving on to the self-insurance fund, and just looking at the appropriations by major object, you can see that the total budget is $7.2 million, and the biggest piece of that is for, really not just insurance premiums, but for claims as well. We are self-insured for up to certain dollar amounts for our various programs, whether it be liability, workers' comp, or, or property. So this represents the claims and the insurance premiums that we pay, that's 65%. And then you can see there's a transfers out of 17%, and we'll be talking about that in a moment, that relates to a rebate from the self-insurance fund to the general and other funds. Salaries and benefits is really a small portion of their operation, supplies and services are equally small, and then allocated costs 2%. And incidentally, they do have 5.2 FTEs in that fund. Here is a detail of the, of the appropriations. You can see first that it's, it's going up by about 4.8%, $327,000. Salaries and benefits going up modestly at 6.4%, that's not unusual. Supplies and services gone down 3.4, nothing unusual there, just some, just some modifications. Allocated costs, nothing unusual, 4.6 is pretty standard. But if you look at insurance premiums, again, that's premiums and claims, you can see that it's gone down by almost 17%. Just to kind of remind you, when we put together the, the two-year financial plan, we had included in '09, the, I'm sorry, we included in '08, the use of reserves to fund a rebate, when we thought at the time it was going to be ongoing, but we weren't sure, but we decided that we would rebate $750,000 from reserves in the self-insurance funds to the various funds, including the general fund. And so that was shown as used to reserves in '09, when we originally put together the budget, it was presented in the same manner, but since we realized at this point that it is going to be an ongoing rebate, if you will, that we decided to actually lower the expenditure line item by that $750,000. Instead of showing it as a used to reserves, that we would then show it as a reduction of expenditures. It gets to the same place. It gets to the same place. So that accounts for about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When we reviewed those those claims and those costs, we found that we can actually lower them an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was one of the ways we helped balance the general fund. We identified two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more just because of the success of the workers' comp program. We've had a reduced number of claims, and the severity of the claims have also gone down. So we're basically in total, almost a million dollars, we were able to reduce our premiums since from oh seven to oh nine. And then you can see the transfers out that I alluded to, one point two five million dollars. That's in addition to what I just talked about, that we have an additional one point two five million dollars in funds in the self-insurance fund that we are going to use as a one-time rebate, which the general fund is portioned is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars again. The rest goes to the special enterprise funds. So this is a one-time expenditure, a rebate. We're not going to adjust expenditures for insurance premiums. This is just treated as a transfers out. And correspondingly, in the in the general fund departments, it's shown as a revenue, a one-time revenue, as opposed to adjusting their charges or expenses.
And Mr. House has a question for you.
For my benefit, but also for those who might be watching, would you describe to me that what we did, in fact, to affect the workers' compensation rate? It was cooperative effort with human resources as well? It wasn't just a numbers game, right?
Oh, no.
It was real substantive effort to try to reduce the claims and that kind of thing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that's exactly right. Our staff and risk management are working hard to, one, just to provide better training for to prevent injuries to begin with, but even for those who have been injured on the job, to try to get them back working as soon as possible through modified work programs. So that's been a large that's been that's helped in large measures to reduce our claims expenses. There's also been changes in legislation that have reduced this local government's exposure when it comes to workers' comp claims. So those three factors, I think, have served to reduce our costs overall.
That's remarkable. Some of the things that we see as purely environmental or purely as a nice thing to do for an employee really can hit the bottom line when we do it this earnestly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at the revenues, these are essentially the self-insurance fund isn't internal service fund, so it's paid for through charges to other funds, including the general fund. So they levy premiums, if you will, to all user departments, and the premiums are organized by the various programs they offer. Liability and property insurance is combined into one set of charges or premiums, workers' comp premiums, and then the premiums that pay for the occupational safety and health programs we just you were just referring to, Councilmember House. And then there's some interest income that the officer also receive from the reserves they have on hand. You can see that the liability and property insurance premiums have only going are going to go up one point eight percent. It's a modest increase, which reflects the stability in those costs. The workers' comp premiums are going down six percent. I mentioned that they were lowered by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but they that's for the one-time rebate, but they had already planned on going up by a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that's the net increase or net decrease. Premiums for occupational safety and health, up thirteen point six. And the reason they're up so much is because they have programs that are done every two years or a couple of years, like safety hiring a safety consultant to do inspections and then the asbestos training. Those things come around every couple of years, so that's why you see a thirteen point six percent increase. And an interest income is expected to go up one point six percent next year. But overall, total revenues are going to go down slightly. Some budget highlights. Here, no highlights. There's no structural or programmatic changes, no staffing changes or capital projects. Some key performance objectives. The first is to complete investigation of fifty percent of industrial injuries with lost time within forty-five days of knowledge. Secondly, is to reduce occupational injuries by five percent, and that's against speaks to the reduction in workers' compensation costs. This has been something we've been doing for a number of years now, just to reduce the number of injuries that we have overall. And then to complete ninety percent of liability claim investigations within forty-five days, and then to conduct, as we do every two years, a self-insurance fund actuarial study. That tells us what we're supposed to have in reserves for the various programs. So on to solid waste. Starting with appropriations by major project, you can see, as I alluded to earlier on, the solid waste budget is almost is over seventeen point five million dollars, almost seventeen point six million dollars. And the biggest portion, so it's a little bit inflated, and it includes the payments to the haulers. And what's interesting is about three or four years ago, we didn't budget those payments to the haulers. We just did a net sort of activity, or so our the total budget was closer to a million dollars, but we thought it would be appropriate to reflect the activity because they're a contractor. So we do the billing, we receive the money, and we decided it would be appropriate to bill to at least to budget the revenues and then the payments to the haulers. But that's the that's the large portion at eighty-six percent. We have some the other costs are really incidental. Salaries and benefits, six percent. Special projects, five percent. We'll be talking about that in a moment. Allocated costs, you can see that the number of FTEs is almost ten in this fund.
So let me go back just a second. Salaries and benefits, if we took out those hauler services, you said we didn't have those in there before, it would be six percent of fourteen percent?
Right. That's right.
Okay. So and that's pretty much in line with all the other departments from what I can see?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
So here are the details. You can see that salaries and benefits are really going up substantially, forty-eight point four percent. And that's for, I guess, three reasons. The first is that, as you saw earlier, the general fund, we decided that we would allocate thirty-seven point five percent of my time to the budget. So that's new. We also have a new environmental services manager position that we'll be adding next year, which is, of course, an increase. And then you might recall that we have this year converted a number of hourly staff to permanent staff or regular employees. And while we had the salary portion pretty much covered, we didn't have the benefit portion covered. So in total, those three represent or make up the increase of forty-eight point four percent. Hauler services going up two point four percent. That's actually per the contract. Our franchise agreements provide that the fees that we pay then go up sixty-five percent of the CPI as of December thirty-first. And so the CPI was roughly four percent, and so sixty-five percent of that is two point four percent or close to it. Supplies and services, the rest, really, they do you see some unusual changes, and that's because when we put together the budget for next year, I took the opportunity to kind of relook at it and make some changes and move things around just to align things to what we're really we're really doing. But in total, the the budget is going to go up just three point seven percent, even in light of the the significant increase in salaries and benefits. I wanted to show you, and you can see the special projects is eight hundred and seventy thousand, so I wanted to show you that since that's a significant number of the details of that, and I'm not going to necessarily go through all of these, but we are in the we are currently in the middle of a rate study for the business sector this year. Next year, we'll do the similar study for the single-family residential sector, and we expect to spend thirty thousand dollars for that. We pay the county, as you might know, a what's called a regional program fee. It's building to our rates. It's about three and a quarter percent that we charge our rate payers to fund the county-run programs that are regional in nature. Really, the primary one is the the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Center at UCSB, which is utilized by our city residents, and so we fund our share of that operational of the operational cost. We also are going to we also have a program that we started this year, and we have some this remaining program for half of the year for the pilot food scraps program. It'll be a fully implemented program come January, but currently, we are paying for ourselves. It's really the cost of the hauler for picking up the food scraps and and then having them turned into compost. We have some costs that we're going to be incurring for this conversion technology study that's we budgeted next year about fifty thousand for our share. I think, as you'll hear tomorrow, those costs will be a little bit higher than that, but we budgeted fifty thousand for that. We also expect to do a waste characterization study. I said I wasn't going to go through all of them, but I am. And then public education, for me, that's really, really important. It's sort of like in the corporate world, advertising is really important. Public education is critical, particularly because we're developing new programs, and education is a critical component of that. We do other things, recycle work program, where we provide bins and other materials to businesses to encourage them to recycle. We work with the school to promote recycling, and then we have some other costs. But in total, special projects, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Here are revenues, just to correspond with our expenditures. You can see solid waste fees are eighty-six percent. You see at the top right, the regional program fees, it's actually thirty point two four percent. That's built into the rates. It's really not a discrete fee anymore, but it is built into the rates, and that's what we use to fund the payments to the county for the regional programs. The portion that really funds our operations is the four percent that's built into the fees as well. Recycling revenues make up about two point seven percent, and I'll be you'll see more detail on that. We do get franchise fees from the haulers, and that represents two point four percent of the total, and then some miscellaneous revenues of one point six, but our total revenue is seventeen point five.
Okay, we have two questions, Ms. Schneider and then Ms. Falconi.
Thank you. Can you go back to the special programs line there? The work we're doing with the school district, we have twenty thousand there, but I know we're supplying a lot of equipment, the big bins, the little bins, the bins in between, and, you know, system-wide, and that seems to be a bigger number than that. So was that because that happened this fiscal year, or where is that number?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Schneider, excellent question, very astute. Where we're accounting for the purchase of those bins, if you were the larger ones that are more expensive, isn't a capital equipment line item, not in a special project?
So this is more just operational staff time, working with the committee, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Falconi?
Oops, sorry.
Mine goes to the next slide, actually, the revenues. So since this is one of the first times we're going through this, this detail, could you have two questions? One, could you give a quick breakdown, and maybe we get something offline that's more specific line items and so forth, a breakdown of what goes into solid waste fees, what goes into the city program fees, and where is the money set forth that we collect pursuant to the UUT on this particular item?
Okay. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falconi, I'll answer the last question first.
Okay.
The utility users' tax is actually goes to the general fund of which
It does.
The only thing that really is retained in this fund is the are the franchise fees, but utility users' tax, the admin fee, those go into the general fund. Of course, then the UT half goes for streets, but it's not in
Right, so in all of the numbers that we have seen so far with respect to the UUT, the six million dollars, the the user utility tax that is collected on refuse collection is contained within that number then?
Yes, if I'm understanding your question, the six percent is part of the bill that goes out for water wastewater and trash, but the six percent on trash goes along with the rest of the utility users' tax to the general fund and then to the streets fund. It's not retained in this fund.
I understand that. My question is that within that number that we see that you've given us the tables for the UUT, and you've got property tax, sales tax, UUT, there's a number there, a gross of what, fourteen million or something? The refuse collection piece of it is in there?
That's correct.
It's contained within it's embedded within that amount of money?
That's correct.
Okay, so we don't see it here. We won't see it here.
Right.
Okay. Maybe you could at some point give us a line item breakdown of what goes into these?
Sure.
Because these are sort of overall captions, and we can speculate, but it'd be nice to know
Sure.
Exactly what comprises that, and we don't need it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So revenue details, again, the solid waste fees, you can see two point four, two point four. That's because that's provided for in the franchise agreements. That's we have no real choice there. The recycling revenues, you can see it's this current year, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars. We have yet to receive that. We're still in the in the middle of negotiating an agreement with the county. Next year, we budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, an important revenue source for us to be able to fund our operations. So that that's the hundred and twenty-five thousand, hundred and twenty-five percent increase. And the reason for the increase is because commodity prices have gone up commensurately. They've gone up about twenty dollars per ton between oh eight and oh nine. Actually, these payments are in arrears, two years in arrears, so over, but they've gone up a twenty dollars. So we are expecting four hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year conservatively, assuming we execute an agreement. There's the franchise fees, two percent increase next year. Reimbursements, I mentioned the hundred and eighty-seven thousand for public education. Eighty percent of that is actually reimbursed by the haulers pursuant to the franchise agreement, and we've spoken to them because we have raised those fees or those those costs, if you will, and so the reimbursements have gone up commensurately. So we expect to get an additional forty thousand dollars for the increase we propose next year. And then other, again, just some other miscellaneous revenues. In total, our revenues are expected to go up three point eight percent.
Mr. House has a question for you.
Would you explain what you meant by the recycling revenues are paid two years in arrears, or what did you mean by that?
Yeah, sorry, opened up the can of worms. Madam Mayor, Councilmember House.
Would you really, you know, in the next twenty, thirty minutes, just give us a brief description?
We still have a lot of time. We the agreement that we're negotiating with the county right now provides that that the the calculation of the revenues that is will be our share is based on essentially two-year-old data. So for this current year, FY oh eight, the two hundred thousand dollars that we have budgeted, that would be based on fiscal year oh six data, so revenues and costs for that year. So the costs are the costs incurred by the county to process, to handle these materials. The revenues that come from the from Gold Coast down south, who actually is our the MRF, the Materials Recovery Facility, who sells those those commodities and provides the revenues from those. So that's the net revenue. So that's what I mean by two years in arrears. Next year's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars would come from the the revenue and expenditures of fiscal year oh seven. So we're always two years behind. And actually, that's the way the program fees are paid. They calculate program fees that we owe them. They bill us two years in arrears. So what we're paying next year is based on oh seven's cost, just so they can see if they close the books, give some time to make those calculations so they're not having to, you know, do it really quickly.
Wow, someday, when we have time and a cup of coffee, you can explain to me why it takes two years to get the books balanced.
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that, but I'd love to. Thank you very much.
Good question.
So the some budget highlights, key projects and initiatives. I mentioned that we are currently in the process of doing a rate study, and that rate study is to not only provide better incentives, but also to incorporate our food scraps recovery program that's scheduled for implementation in January of oh nine. We are also, as part of that, developing an education outreach campaign or program that gives us a good sense of how we should approach the business sector, in what manner, what order, et cetera. And as I mentioned, then come January, implement that program full scale in the business The conversion technology request for proposal, this is a project that I'm heavily involved with currently. You'll be seeing actually an item tomorrow, so I don't want to steal the thunder there, but we are in the we've just recently come through a reached an important milestone, and that's identifying qualified vendors that will eventually receive an RFP come later this year. But we still have a lot of work to do, including the public outreach, defining roles and responsibilities, meaning who's going to own the facility, how it's going to be financed, how it will be owned. There's some technical studies that need to be completed, and then in developing the actual RFP, that we'll have to design develop some some performance standards that will be looking to vendors to satisfy. This is a this is another key project initiative. We have, as you may know, a closed landfill at Ealing's Park. I'm not sure it's technically considered a landfill, but maybe a dump, but it is a landfill that was closed in the sixties, I believe, and or maybe later. But we have responsibilities to monitor that landfill for any any emissions or methane gas or any kind of gas emissions, and we have identified a couple wells of about eighteen that there's there is some some detacs that are higher than what we're supposed to have. So we are in the process now of hiring a contractor to do the testing, determine the source of that. If it's related to the landfill, we're going to have to take some measures to remediate that, including installation, if necessary, a gas extraction system. If it's not related to landfill, then we'll have to determine how to handle it at that point. We are having to work with the Ealing's Park Foundation because, as you know, they're proposing a development on that site, actually, the lower part of the park. There are, I think, eight acres that they're looking to develop on. So we'll need to work with them in case we need to include that area within in putting in the pipes for the gas extraction system. But right now, we don't really know a lot. But right now, we don't really know a lot. We're going to find out within the next month or so.
Can the gas generate energy?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's the magnitude that would, but it would essentially, it would just either burn it or clean it before it gets emitted, the gas, it'll take it out of the landfill.
Smelly.
Proposed fee changes, as I mentioned, the fees are largely governed by the franchise agreements. I went through this detail already. The December to January CPI was 4.5, so the rate increase was about 3 percent, and no additional proposed fees for next year, or new fees. Some staff changes, I mentioned the conversion of hourly staff. Two recycling educator positions were created from those conversions. We also created an environmental services manager, as I mentioned, and then the allocation of my time to the solid waste fund. And then we have all those being funded in large part by the recycling revenues from that would be sharing with the county, subject to, still pending. Key performance objectives, this relates to our desire to expand our, to expand recycling in the business sector along with food scraps. So we would, our goal is to meet 300 new contracts, or make 300 new contacts in the business sector, to discuss within the environmental and financial benefits of recycling. Those are the two educators that we created. They're the ones that are out and about in the street, knocking on doors, per se, and their goal is to make 300 new contacts. We also want to enlist 50 food service establishments, really for a six-month period, starting in January through June next year, because that's when the program will be implemented. And that will represent approximately 750 tons of potential diversion from the landfill, and of course, will be converted to compost. And then by September, we hope to negotiate and execute a contract with a certified composting facility, because these food scraps are going to have to go somewhere. They're currently going up north to Engle and Gray under the pilot program, but we will likely be doing an RFP for that. And then another performance objective is to respond to 98 percent of code enforcement calls within one business day. These are illegal dumpings, whether it's on the median, or a public right-of-way, or on private properties.
Okay, Ms. Falcone has a question for you.
I have more of a statement than a question, and it has to go to the verbiage, the wording, the intent of the first bullet point, and that is to meet with 300 contacts about the benefits of recycling. That is far less than the mandatory ordinance that we have been contemplating for the last several years, many several years now. And I noticed that the wording for the food program is to enlist 50 food services into a food scrap and recovery compost program, which means that we're moving beyond the pilot program at this point and actually establishing a program. So the language there is very telling, that we're going to create a food scraps program in the commercial sector, but I don't see us moving forward with one of the stated goals of not only the solid waste committee, but also the council for many years, which was to establish a mandatory recycling program in the business sector. Now, I know that getting to them is a little bit more difficult, but I'd like to really continue to say that that is an established goal, that we really do need to continue to move forward on. And if having a voluntary program for the moment is as good as we can do, hoping to enlist as many as we can, okay, but the next time we see this, I do hope, and then hopefully before we see the budget again, we do see more concentrated, more concrete language with respect to establishing a mandatory program in the recycling, because all of these businesses around town do not recycle. That's a huge amount. It's not weighty, it's not sexy, but it is a material and meaningful amount that I can't, I can't let go. So I need to keep saying it.
No, you're, I mean, again, you're absolutely right. Our intent is, we thought it'd be better to start with a carrot and then later the stick. So we wanted to provide incentives, one, because incentives aren't really there, or they're not to the degree we think are appropriate. In some cases, there's a disincentive to recycle the traditional recyclables.
That's true.
So we want to cure that, but the reason for environmental educators is to go out and talk to people, which we've had a lot of success, but to the extent, you know, we're going to give it a year or so, but then eventually, we'll come back with that, behind that with a mandatory-
They've had a year or so, and so a year maybe. I think my bunch of carrots is getting to its minimum, so.
Okay. All right, so there is actually one program within the Environmental Services Division that's in the general fund, and this is the last of the Environmental Services. And just to say, this has to do with our leaking underground fuel tanks and dealing with hazardous material responses or spills. Here is the budget. It's not a very big budget, it's really just one and a half staff. The total budget's $530,000 recommended next year. That's actually a reduction of 7.5 percent, primarily because they also shared in the contingencies, so they took a hit and reduced their budget accordingly by a small amount. The key projects and initiatives, I mentioned, the Underground Storage Tank, or USD program, they are subject to the requirements of the California Water Quality Control Board, which is really headed by the County Fire Prevention Division, that they're the local enforcement agency. And so we have a requirement under state law to basically either mitigate or remove tanks that are underground, that are presumed to be leaking. Our policy has been just to take them out, because whether we can mitigate them by putting some kind of covering over them, ultimately, those things tend to kind of break down, so it's just better to remove them, and if necessary, replace them with an above-ground storage tank. And then beyond that, we have, for those that we have removed, whether it's recently or a number of years ago, we have to continue to monitor those for any groundwater issues or soil issues, or even emission issues. So we're always, we're always monitoring those things. In some cases, we're going to have to take some action, because the, what we're finding is not allowable, and we're having to do some mitigation or remediation. It could be a gas extraction system or some other type of approach that deals with the contamination. And then lastly, we just, we always have to do monitoring of what are called either Luf sites or SMUs, site mitigation units, where we have either tanks installed or replaced, we're always having to monitor those on a more long-term basis. So key performance objectives is to meet 100 percent of all required deadlines, and these are established by the LEA for leaking, removal of leaking underground fuel tanks and site remediation efforts. Also to bring three of this, and this is a slight change from what you see in the document, because we actually are going to be completing a couple this year, so we want to bring three of the city's noncompliant fueling sites into compliance by the end of next year. So that's it for finance. I can move on to non-departmental. Is there any questions?
Okay, are there questions? I don't see any. Non-departmental.
All right, thank you for your patience. I'll go through this quickly. This is non-departmental, I'm not sure why we called that, because it just doesn't fit anywhere else. And we've done, I think, a pretty good job, and we, some of the things that are previously in here to other departments where they're really administered. But here is the outline, same as always. The total non-departmental budget is $4.6 million. The biggest portion of that is community promotions, it's still a fair amount of money. These are the line item, if you will, line item organizations that we provide funding to for community promotions purposes, that's 30 percent. This is where we also fund our capital program. We have a separate capital fund, so anytime the general fund funds capital projects, it's transferred into a separate fund, and this is represented by the 24 percent. You'll see that we also have interfund transfers, and the interfund transfers are also capital nature, but they're not part of the general fund capital program. They relate to the FMS or GIS that you've heard about, but they're going into the internal service fund or for information systems. And then appropriated reserves, 18 percent, and we'll talk more about that. And then debt service for a small portion of the general fund debt, we pay out of this So here are the details. Community promotions, 17.8, almost 17.9 percent, or a million dollars increase of just 1.9 percent. Special projects, special projects, just actually some nominal things, I can't remember what it was, but it is. But debt service transfer is really the same, we really didn't change it from 'oh eight to the next year. Again, the interfund transfers includes the big portion for the FMS, the general fund's portion of the FMS replacement and GIS for next year will be transferred to the Information Systems Fund, and this is where it's accounted for. And then the appropriated reserve, we've talked a lot about the, how we balance the general fund, in that we created a cushion, if you will, in the general fund for contingencies next year, and that's why you see the appropriated reserves at, from $23,000 this year to $815,000 next year. And the capital hourly transfer, the nature of capital goes up and down, so there's no real reason why it went down. It's just, in certain years, it's higher than others, so nothing really magical about Here are the details of the community promotions, it's just that one line item, 1.8 million, almost 1.9 million dollars. The vast majority goes to the CVB, at almost 1.5 million dollars. We give money to the various agencies. These are the, again, the line items, community promotion organizations, Visitors Information Center, Fourth of July Symphony, et cetera. And some proposed budget changes, we did reduce the funding for CVB. It was originally at 3 percent, and we reduced it down to 2 percent, which saved us about $16,000. This is part of the overall general fund balancing strategy. So their proposed budget for next year is 1.5 instead of 1.57, 1.517. We also increased the Fourth of July fireworks funding by 5,000, just because their costs have gone up, and we increased their funding next year from 50 to $55,000. I mentioned the appropriated reserve, normally at $100,000, we bumped it to by $715,000 for contingency purposes. Our general fund capital hourly transfer, we did reduce it slightly, $75,000 from what we originally had in the two-year financial plan, and that relate, those adjustments were for ADA and sustainability improvements. As you've heard, this is just reducing new programs we added beginning this year by just by a slight amount. In total, for next year, our capital program will be about $1.1 million. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
I might add to what Mr. Smarrio just said. I just received an email from the chief of police, and last Thursday, the state senate eliminated funding for cops funding and also for the booking fee reimbursement, without any notice and without telling anybody ahead of time.